Tell them that's just the incentive. We haven't done the proper accounting yet.
Mr. Bridge, you want to start us off with what we're looking at? As far as the public, I mean, I know what we're looking at.
Yeah, what we hear is we have a series of four different funding scenarios for the water rate increase. And when we say water rate increase and funding scenario, I just want to make it clear this covers operational, to include contractual, to include our capital, to include wages, and also includes the tower maintenance. We do know earlier in the year, we had discovered that our water towers haven't been maintained over the course of the past 32 years, I think, to be specific. So we need to find some way to enter into some sort of agreement, whether that be through the tower maintenance or through the bidding, that council had to look into doing. But basically, we are at a point in time to where a decision needs to be made. I think we've got four valuable options for council to ponder over. I think it's very straightforward. Hopefully, we've had time to review the reports from our, from the tower inspection we have.
Do you want to go into a little bit of detail on the tower inspections, so we have it on the record? Interior is...
Do we start with the exterior?
If you go to page 10, when you requested to have TIC come in and do the report, you kind of wanted to know the, what the condition of the tank was before we went into asset management earlier this year. On page 10, exterior coating condition, the coating on the exterior of the tank appeared to be in fair, it's a poor condition, it was not providing adequate protection from corrosion to the steel. Some things were in decent shape, but that is basically your outside shell. And on page 13, that is your interior coating condition, the coating on the interior surfaces of the tank appeared to be in poor condition, it was not providing adequate corrosion protection to the underlying steel. The interior coating exhibited good adhesion to the underlying coating. The coating appeared to be in epoxy coating system, just like the exterior, there seems to be decent adhesion, where that gentleman had talked to you guys earlier in that asset management, that they could probably overcoat that tank. But that just gives you, in a nutshell, the quality of the exterior and the quality of the interior. And that was a full drain inspection.
I was, in particular, I was actually shocked at that, as far as the looks on the inside of the tank. I was expecting it to be like dingy color on the inside. It actually looked, I'm assuming, it looked white, at least.
Yeah, we have clean water. The water is clean, so you won't get the dingy look. It's the quality of the paint adhering to the, to the steel and what's underneath it. What was happening is the water, if they were to send a diaper in, and this is why it was good, that we didn't go this route, is when you look at the inside of the tank, it'll look good. You pull the water off it, you just took the pressure off that paint, and that paint can just start pulling away from the structure. And that's what they were starting to experience. There is some spalling, or what do they call it, bubbling, that is definitely in there right now.
Also, you guys, do, how often do you have to test on the water coming out of the center? The system?
I don't know specifically out of the tank, per se, but we do six bacteria tests a month, and sometimes I think it comes out of the tap right there. So it's random, but I think it's one of our normal sites.
One other thing that we were asking about, when I remember, is the cost and asking for other bids. Did this go out for bids?
No, the first part that I brought to council's attention initially was an asset management program, where you do not go out for bid, and each and every phase of that project was included in that price, from the inspection to the inspection of the work, the work that they do, and every bid of work that they do during their time of that contract. With this inspection, it's the first phase, if you want, if you definitely want to get a second opinion, and take it out for bids. And that is where you would take and hire similar to this same company, and it's around $50,000, where you basically hire the engineer, they design the plans, and then they'll, we'll put it out for bid for a specific contractor, low bid, probably, to come in and do the job they inspected for X amount of dollars. And in their tower inspection, in there, they noticed, they said it was about $800,000 is what they're, what they're kind of seeing average bids go for, for that size of structure. We even looked at that number, and it kind of seems high, too, for a bidding cost. We think it would be less than $800,000. But definitely, the asset management was even way less than that, because they didn't take into account the tank mixer that will go into that tower either. So they were at $800,000 just for painting. So we thought $700,000 would be a fair value for painting, for bid, but then you have to add the engineering costs of about $50,000, and then you have to add the tank mixer, which runs about $40,000. They have that done, and then we were looking to try to do the electrical work in-house, which was, it could be a couple hundred bucks to maybe a thousand bucks to do that.
Any other questions on the tank inspections, or from Mr. Kiko?
Again, with the tank, I am with everybody. I like the look of Adams, but it is becoming an issue. And as you noticed in my last report, we just spent $4,200 bucks just to weld a ladder to make it OSHA. There is plenty more of those items that you had seen on the Adams Street report from before, in a previous inspection, that will have to be done if we decide to keep that tank.
But this doesn't have to do with the tank, but it does have to do with the well drilling. I know that's added into this here, in some of this, there's a well drilling.
In the funding scenarios?
In the funding.
Correct. Yes, it is.
And how important is it? Can that make, that give us six wells, seven wells?
We're currently on basically three and a quarter wells. We have four, we have four active wells, and one of those wells is down to about 25% of its life expectancy. Well, it's actually past its official life expectancy. It was going to be about 450 to 600 gallon a minute wells, we're doing about 200.
Okay. Now, can you explain, Gerald, and I know this has been explained to me many times, you know, why we have so many wells?
Well, you have to have redundancy. Now, we are a 1.2 million gallon a day plant. It was built for expansion, so to be able to produce that, it takes 694 gallons per minute to give you 1 million gallons in a day. And we have two wells that produce average of 600 each, and we have one that's only 200, and one that's about 700. So you always run two wells at a time, because if one goes out, you always have a redundant well behind you. So we run in pairs. If one goes down, you're back to one and running one well, or we alternate wells. And because our wells are in such close proximity of each other, we no longer have easements that the EPA will allow us to relocate a well within our same area. So well four, they trade up by, say, Route 235, its current zone, so, it just, I did a blank, isolation radius, it goes into State Route 235, and they will not allow us to pull that well and re-drill it or drill it deeper, which is what I initially tried to get done, but they won't allow it. So we have to look at possibly some property behind it, or relocating it to where, if you get a spill off 235, or any kind of contamination, gasoline, whatever it is, right now has potential to contaminate all four wells. Or if you get another well way away from the site, then you have safety, a safety valve there.
So are you still thinking about doing it there at the ballpark, or can you say further away, when we talk?
We've looked all the way from close to the golf course to near the creek, away from it, on the other side would be kind of behind Hensley property. We've looked at various locations there, we've looked at, up on, it's a curb of Addison. Everywhere we have to look is pretty far away. And if you look at alternative wellfields for most cities, they are nowhere near there, they could be miles apart. We're just, hopefully, we can get it within a couple thousand feet.
Okay, so the cost of that, if I remember right, should have been $100 and some thousand dollars?
Is what usually it takes to get a well in without electric to it, electric in the piping. See, $100, $125,000. It ranges on driller, the type of material that you're going through, I mean, the, ours are normally drilled 100 feet. So people think residential wells, 60, 65 feet, this is nothing like it. These are a minimum, I want to take, put that back in.
Thank you.
Our wells are a minimum of 10 inches diameter and larger. A residential well is six.
Another thing, didn't we have, last time, they get cleaned out every now and then, don't they?
Within every five years, every well gets cleaned.
But we always have trouble with pumps when they, when they get cleaned out.
But we always have trouble with well four, with its production, always. We just clean it for, to hopefully keep what we got. And a life expectancy for pump and motor is seven years. That's, that's all it does, it just runs. So sometimes we'll have to replace the pump. We get lucky, like we just did well six this year, we had a little bit of work on a pump, but we didn't have to replace the motor. So we're probably, if not before the next cleaning, well, within the next five years, we'll probably have to put a new motor on it. But that, that's going to be almost every time.
Quick question. When I looked through these, I did not see, I tried to find it, an email, I couldn't find it, unfortunately. There was a, maybe you talked about the asset management, but at one point in time, when we got the asset management documents, and we also got a document from a company for one-time payment guarantee, can I ask why wasn't that, why wasn't that added to this? Just because it was, I think it was like $115,000, Mr. Kiko, was it?
The asset management style was 115, five.
And then what was the one-time payment?
Oh, right now, their estimate, we decided to go get an inspection done, which would put us right around 700 just for the main job.
Just with the asset management?
Yeah, because the...
But what about the one company that was going to pay it and be done?
Yeah, Pittsburgh, we almost looked at that estimate as, this goes inside, paint companies talking, definitely don't even consider that. Way, way too low, you're not going to get a good job, and you're probably not going to, you're probably going to have issues within one to three years, so I kind of let that go by the wayside.
They weren't very recommended.
I was told in the industry that there are a few companies out there that will definitely get you low, 400, 450,000, but if you want to value your asset, don't even, don't even consider them. And you have to have documentation and not pick the lowest and best bidder.
All this Pittsburgh did?
I want to say they were without the, I'd have to go back and pull it back up. Let me see if I have my app with me. I had preferred, which supposedly they merged with Pittsburgh, so I think we're sitting at, they did 432,000. Exterior coating, sandblast all exterior, interior sandblast, interior's always going to be a full sandblast, exterior sandblast, handrails. Yeah, that's the estimate that we had gotten from them to, to do that project.
2035?
432, no mixer and no engineering, so you're looking at probably add another 90, 50 for engineering, and the mixer was 40 or 42, so you'll add about another 92,000 on top at 432 at minimum.
And then running the risk of having to do the whole thing over again, painting in two years.
And if I were prepared, there's a two-year guarantee?
No, one.
One, one year, okay. So the last question is, is they, I just have, for me, I just have a lot of concern about the asset management, who's continuing to crank up, you know, means one, two, three, four, five, six, and then that's every year paying that, that 115, 115, 115, 115, 115, and then in 2022, 2023, do we start again? And it's, and it's going to be 115, 115, 115, 115. How long is this going to go on?
In 2020, in 2023?
You're going to pay, what, what we're looking at is their asset management started you out with a 10-year program. The first six years pays off your work, okay? If you go with a bid, you're going to pay the, you're going to pay the amount upfront, one way or another, whether it's cash, loan, whatever you're just going to pay upfront. With the asset management, you pay for their product in the first six years, you can cancel that contract. And I've been working with a guy, saying, hey, what if we pay for the six years and called it quits? He said, well, at least you paid for all your equipment, and you got a six-year warranty with it. He said, if we have to repaint it in year three, we repaint it. So you get a six-year with that amount, but then after six, after the six year, you cancel the agreement, and you wait until the next time you need it done.
My end, Rick. First off, you guys are asking fantastic questions. Thank you, Mr. Kiko. I just want to note, we are at a very critical point for our water department. Historically speaking, this city has changed it over to the next year, and those practices need to stop. If you look at your ending balances and memo, why I said pay attention to your ending balances, those are crucial. Every year, we should be starting at zero, opposed to using whatever reserves we had last year to help get it through through this year. What this does is it sets up your water department to be able to handle massive breaks in the system. If the EPA comes says, you guys got to hire two more people, take your minimum staffing levels now, this will allow us to do this. The city has to get past the practice of getting by by the skin of their teeth, year to year, especially with your enterprise funds. Our general fund did it for a little bit, we're getting out of that. These are enterprise funds, they need to be self-supported. This is a service that you turn it on, you get it, you pay for it. Enterprise funds are not supposed to be supplemented by your general fund, they are again supposed to be self-supported. But to reiterate, we need to get past the barely making it year by year. And I would like to point out a few things with these scenarios. In 2026, the loan for the water plants will be gone. That's the $217,249 that the city wanted to make that massive plant down there, what, we're about 60% capacity? No, we're about 45%. 45% capacity, so we're not even utilizing half of it. We put into place that the city should have been on the payments program for the past 30 years, those two things would have taken into account, we would not be in the situation we are in now. So basically, this council and this administration, we are doing the right thing, and sometimes it takes a hard decision by seven people who are elected to make the right decisions to move forward. No one likes to see these massive increases, but I will say, we will not be the first city to raise them. Pick up the paper nowadays. West Carrollton just, I think, raised their 40%. Springfield, I think, just raised their 40, 30 or 40%. Montgomery County, they just did the same thing. So it's not just us in this unique place, and I hate to say it like this, but this is the truth. We, how much, how much did we amend our revenue by this year for gallons that we anticipated to get, but we didn't?
About $50,000.
About $50,000. We've had to go back and say, all right, the trend is, we're not, people aren't using what they use. But that's not the issue. The issue is, people nowadays have high efficiency washers and dryers, toilets, showerheads, you name it. If water comes out of it, there's a little thing you can get on it to make it more energy efficient. I should tell you that even though people are conserving, we still have operation, operational costs to hit, to include capital, to include your man hours, to include, you know, things that we're discussing now. So unfortunately, this seven-person elected body has a very difficult decision to make. Unfortunately, it needs to be made. But again, we are at that critical point to where we need to stop band-aiding things and moving forward and operate as a city should operate. Every year, at the end of the year, whatever we have left over needs to go to Star Ohio. We need to make interest off that for that particular fund that we start doing next year. I can't remember the last time we were able to do that. And that practice of using your carryover balance, what that's going to do, some point in time, you're not going to have anything to carry over. We're going to be like that at the end of this year, or next year, and we're going to barely make it.
One last call. So the first plan, option A, would increase overall, of course, the late years, would be a 32% increase. And that has no grant or loan from the general fund, but it will be grant money from the general fund, 39% increase. Can you tell me why the 2% difference between options A and option C? Is there any money, money, will there be naturally lower? High to low?
No, because when you start this in a couple of years, you see the price difference, 125,000 versus 115,500. So that's your difference right there, because if you wait a couple of years, you can assume the cost of doing business is also going to go up.
Well, it's 115 on option C, so it'd be cheaper.
And I also think that you're looking at your percentages wrong. You're looking as a group to where I think you need to split them out year by year.
Well, I mean, it's still going to be a full percent. As a, as a P economics student, 125, 125,000 a year, start across same amount. Same amount time for one, two, three, four, five, if we were to crank that 115 out in the first year, I mean, you typically have that 39% lower over the course of the cycle.
What he's saying is...
What numbers, what letters do you want?
A and C.
A is 125, starting in 2020.
You want to say why? This one? Right there, you got, it was about 37. Grant, year where the grant from the general fund, he's up, he's 39%. He said this is a 2035, so 39%.
You see what I'm saying?
We're giving the increase for the fund. So it should be lower, that we're giving the fund money.
It's wondering if it's like, how is that?
C is a grant.
Everything else should be identical.
What takes a back?
What he's adding is, he's saying this is a third of some years. Saying C is a 35, 39% increase, but the general fund, 100, so it should be, this C should be cheaper than A. So just because we're giving them money. Just because we're giving them money.
See, now, that, for the...
If anything, A should be higher.
There was something that was more negative in here?
Like the loaning at 40%, really loans and just trying to charge everything. Was that, that title, 40%?
It's because you're paying it so early and trying to build your balances up there already?
Yeah. On C, yeah, you may have gotten a grant at early, but you're also paying 215, 230,000 by 2020, where you have, you're just starting in 2020 to pay 125. So that is why you have the additional 115 earlier, that's going to cover that extra 2%.
So I said, don't look at your percentages as a whole, look at them year by year.
Well, we're looking at it year by year. Yeah, we want it right out, though, and the percentages should be lower over the course of the duration, and economic standards, they should be, because if you're looking at it, we're paying 115 out, what I think is, it's going to cost less money to actually utilize. So we paid that 115 out in 2018, and we're increasing the first year by 20, that money should be in there for 2019. As for this one, we're going to be introducing these fees in, as A, so when is the first 20% increase going to affect for A? Does it go in 2020, or does it go in 2018?
It's because the 2019 payment is coming out before, even though it's less than the 125, the 2020 payment, the 2% in, when I talked to Randy about this, there wasn't a way that I couldn't front-load this rate increase. Instead of staggering it out to, like you said, maybe get the percentages to reduce earlier or have less percentage increase, regardless if there was a zero payment made in 2018, like the one you're looking at on C, there'd be zero payment, but because in 2019, you're making that payment, 115, five, that little bit there from that one, instead of waiting till 2020, made a difference to having the additional.
And 2018, that 20% goes into effect, that increase, so that money would be there in 2019 to cover some. I mean, that adds up, I mean, if you're not spending any money in 18, and an increase of 20% goes in, which is by the same 20% you're going to charge in 2020, that money should be there for the 2019 payment. I mean, it depends on the numbers, it makes sense to me, between the 2% back, it should be cheaper over the course, because the money's still going to be there if you're collecting in 2018, which is how it reads, you put.
You'd have to yell at the maker of Excel, because whenever you take and blank these out, and you, and you reduce that amount in that line item, and then you take the percentage and you add it, well, and I don't use percentages in these, those are just for guidelines, it's the dollar amounts here, is whether you move these numbers, Excel automatically calculates what your total's going to be for your revenues and expenditures. And if the, if the ending fund balance, what you would call your carryover, was a negative, I'd have to adjust it. Regardless of where we, where we think it comes out of that year...
The program is messed up.
Excel wasn't messed up, it just...
Well, the formula is, if you're still expending 115 out of the general fund or collecting that year, I mean, it should be cheaper, Mr. Leal, here, you work with finances, would you agree?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking it would be as well, because I don't, I don't get what you're saying about moving this all around.
Yeah, I don't.
You have a 20% increase in 2018, okay? And you have a 15% increase and a 10% less. And you have a 2 and a 2.
It's going to be identical, so 18 should be identical. They are, the bottom, they're identical, identical.
I just feel like, I just, the revenues actually stay...
Identical. Because you can...
That gets us that one out, it gives you still...
So you're absolutely... So take that 2% off of that last year, I think you, I think we had, I think we just got ahead of yourself by an extra 2%.
The 2% off this last year is, was to help in negative here. It's not to help the front, it's, it was a negative coming out here when I dropped the 2% off.
Because your carryover balance is not going to be positive if you don't have that additional increase. You look, and it's exactly what you just said, you go from 18 to 19, you still have to pay this back, okay? Okay, so basically, that last 2% of what you're questioning, take that 115...
It's going to be off paid back.
I understand that, you have to pay back the first 115. I'm going up through your whole thing. If you go down to 2023 on C, okay? See that 115, five, all right? Then you have your, a carryover balance. The 115 is higher than the 108. So if you don't have that 2% increase on that last year, you're going to end up in the negative. So basically, if you're going to have the general fund grant you, the money, so that's going to cost you an additional 2% because you have to make that payment.
I think he must have said that wrong.
To cover the loss, that's exactly why it's there. That's why I said, pay attention to your carryover balances every year. When I looked at you, you have 80, you're ending with 82,210 in 2022, okay? You have to, am I saying that right?
I wouldn't be kidding about it, I've heard of the stance of loss that you're talking about, because if that looks in 2022, the carryover is 82,210, and 2023 is 189,43, where's, where's the loss we're talking about?
What's the name of it? 2022, we ending with 82, okay? We turn around, we have to pay them 115 beginning of January 20, end of 2020, 23.
Yeah, so at the end of 2021...
We have to wait to the end of 2019 to, 2023, to receive all your funds.
So it's a year behind, is what you're saying?
Basically, yeah, that's, I guess, a way to look at it. We have to send them a payment, begin first month of December, January 2023, 115. There's no money in there. You have to have that additional 2% to get through.
So 8,000 will cover the 115,000?
Thank you, yes, exactly what it is. So we, so in 2023, we have to send them a payment with 115.
That's the deficit, just to keep it from the A2.
We have to wait a whole, we, we receive these as we come in, you know? So we're not going to have the money in there to make that first payment in early 2019, which is why you have that. Anytime that you gift it from there, and that's, it's a give and a take. If you want to gift it from the general fund, you're still going to have to have money in there to make these payments.
Okay, so that explains it to me, so in 2018, they won't see a water rate increase?
No, they'll see the increase.
So they'll see the 20%. So they'll see the 20%, just follow me here. So you'll see that 20% as we loan the money, so we're not losing any money from the water fund. So starting in 20... So starting in twenty nineteen, if we get that twenty percent increase, is it covered, correct? My, my problem is this one, option A, twenty percent, you're saying right out of the gate, we're going to be able to pay that one twenty-five thousand. Twenty twenty, I mean, where's all this money just going to, and when does those, and when, when does A's rates go to, correct?
Do you see that twenty, ten, five and two?
Yes.
And you see the twenty fifteen, two and two? This goes beyond just tank, this covers your capital, this covers all operations, okay? So when you do this kind of stuff, you need to account for unforeseen capital projects. You need to account for unforeseen breakage. So this field that I gave about the city going year to year, just getting by, that equates to what we're doing here now. I understand the confusion, it took me minutes to really figure it out, that's what it is. If you're loaning it from the general fund, and I see your logic, I see everyone's point, you still have to have money in there from twenty twenty-two onto twenty twenty-three to make that payment. You don't have that payment, you need to look at your ending balances and how that affects the year in and year out. Is that correct?
Yeah, I was going to say, real quick, take a look at your consumer charge. Just the first one, A, okay, there in your revenue, on twenty eighteen, we would project to bring in eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, okay? With, with that rate increase, then the next year, with the additional increases, to bring in nine hundred sixty-one, then a million nine, and then a million twenty-nine, okay? This is a four-year rate increase, so you're at a million twenty-nine, your revenue never goes up, but the expenditures continue to go up. So now, if you have increased expenditures above your revenues, you took the front load that you got initially in that twenty thou- that twenty percent, and the ten percent to help cover you down the road, until these big loans are paid off, including the tenant. So when your revenue flattens out, and you look at your expenditures, expenditures never go down, the expenditures keep going up. So if I was able to, say, pull this tower off for another ten years, not, not going to happen, but let's say it was ten years, then you might be able to go five, 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 two, two, and get it worked up there to where you now have the revenue to take care of it down the road, where this way, we, we had to front load it and not, let's say, stretch out the increase, it had to be so abrupt. And because we, we want to do this increase and not, say, do perpetual, and do a two percent here on out, which has always been a good thing to have that little bit coming in, but once your revenues flatten out, um.
Twenty twenty-six.
Look at, like, say, on the A, twenty twenty-five, look at your ending fund balance, thirty-nine thousand there at the bottom. That is all, after all those increases, after paying that last year of tower, and then look at the next year, we go to one thirty, because we quit paying the tower, look at the next year, then when we stop paying the water loan payment. Only because we're paying so much, you have to front load this increase to cover it in the short term. I don't have fifteen years to build this up. That, that, that's the, that's the hard thing with, um, putting all the revenues in the front of it to help carry you on the back end. So if I drop that two percent that you're talking about on that one site, on the Excel, it automatically puts a negative in a couple of my fund balances. So try to do the minimum, but still keep some sort of a fund balance in there, and it just wouldn't allow me. You had to add another, and two percent was it?
The current law between how, how much life expectancy of this plant?
Uh, the, the, well, it depends on what you want to know, the structure is fifty years, um, plants and pumps, seven to ten, uh, the equipment is usually twenty that's inside, uh, it's, it's all variable, but the building itself will be around for a while.
So, so if it's paid off in twenty twenty-five, how many years after that before we have to do major?
Twenty twenty-six.
We could.
Yeah, that, it will be twenty years old at that point.
So, so third record, we have thirty years left on the plant.
The building. Yeah, you're, yeah, your wearable items, yep.
Did you say thirty years? Did you say thirty?
Thirty years upon the. We have thirty years left.
Oh, God, all right, well, I said thirty years to pay that loan's paid off, no, 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 okay, sorry.
Thirty years left if we not being a lot. But do we now, if I remember at a meeting, you said that there are some intentions that need to be made now for that?
We're, we're working with the high-service pump room, we are working inside the plant to make sure things get, have longevity to them. Because obviously, we're paying on a plant, and some of that two hundred seventeen thousand dollars you're paying for, we've already replaced a pump and a motor that you're still paying for, the nature of an enterprise fund. So I don't want to get into loans down the road, I don't like that, I would like to have a reserve of cash to say, when that pump goes down, I have fifteen thousand, go pay for that pump, not go loan fifteen thousand, and that pump, about two years later, now I'm still paying on that fifteen thousand, and now I'm rebuilding it again. So the goal is to pay for the piece of equipment, get it up, get it done, and then the next time it breaks, you pay for it again. And we're not like that, right now, we're paying for a plant, still got ten years left, and we've already repaired and replaced some equipment in there.
And honestly, counsel, these could very well be higher. If you look at your ending fund balances till that loan's paid off, you're not really breaking a hundred thousand dollars carryover unless you choose option A. So even with all these rate increases, and you're still not, your ending balance is still below a hundred thousand dollars in three fourths out of these scenarios, that should tell you something. This water plant has been neglected for thirty years, it's that simple. I mean, that water plant, I'm sorry, but these water towers, and the capital programs, the city has not had the money to carry over to do these things. So we literally have been band-aiding the water, and quite frankly, the wastewater plant for the longest time. Again, these percentages could be higher till out for us to carry that over. You know, like I said, this is not the current council's fault, this is not the current administration's fault, this is the fault of a, of a city as a whole. But when you look at what you need to do in a capital, you need to look at your operation, you need to look at your bottom line and how that all plays in, all this is very confusing if you don't work on it day in and day out, you're not taking into account what you have to carry over to pay for that first payment next year. And I get why there was confusion, but at the end of the day, we need to ask ourselves, are we truly comfortable with these ending back fund balances? Because the moment that a seventy-five thousand piece breaks, guess who's going to be paying for it? The general fund. So we need to get past those times and ages where, where the city's band-aiding things, it just needs to stop, that's not good fiscal practices, to be honest with you. And we have the ability here to start taking it in that right direction, and I firmly believe once twenty twenty-six hits, and that two hundred seventeen thousand dollars a year is no longer there, if you look at twenty twenty-six, and it keeps on going up, four hundred twenty-four thousand, seven hundred four, nine hundred sixty-eight, B, four hundred thirty-nine thousand, seven forty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, one million dollars. That's when you guys come back to the council and say, hey, we're going to decrease your rates, we're going to figure out what we need to carry over, we may be able to decrease your rates for a year or two, or we can at least freeze them for the next five. But this council has the power and authority to make a decision that's going to put this water plant in a much better position. Not only from a working condition, but also from a health, safety and sanitation issue. You guys were elected to make these tough decisions, it's a tough decision to make, we need to make one very, very, very soon. But the numbers don't lie in these situations, you know, and to be honest with you, anything past twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen with your expenses, it's a crapshoot, we're just estimating the best we can, we don't know what's going to come down as far as contractual expenses, we don't know what the EPA is going to mandate us to do. So we need to have also a nest egg in here to help us get through, but the turning point for this city and this water plant is going to be twenty twenty-six. We're at forty-five percent max capacity, capacity right now for a water plant, that the city wanted to make a Cadillac of a water plant to anticipate all this growth in the city, or that growth never came, while we're paying for it, and that's exactly the position we're in now.
I wanted to let you, you know, one small thing too, we, the hydrants, we got five hydrants done this year, and, uh, so it's a little over ten thousand dollars. The one hydrant that we replaced on Drake took six valves to shut off, to do one hydrant, and the hydrant has its own watch valve. Those valves are five thousand dollars a piece to replace, and we had to work almost all six, an hour a piece, to up, down, up, down, and they could break at any time. That's the problem we have, is we have some nineteen fifties, doesn't seem old, but we have valves in there that just are questionable. So what we don't want to get into is have a blowout, and we drain a tower, and we can't valve things down. The superintendent and I have talked, and we're like, boy, it'd be nice to go and start doing a valve replacement. That's kind of, I wouldn't say it's in here, but I think we could start on it, but we do have some serious issues with valves. That's one of my big things, is if a sixteen inch starts blowing, it's fairly new, it's mid-nineties, but they're butterfly valves. Whoever designed to put this thing in didn't put gate valves, which are meant to shut off water. Uh, butterfly valves are not meant to shut water, they're meant to throttle water or regulate water. Well, so if we have a sixteen blow, thank God we haven't yet, um, we dread that, I mean, we really do, we sit there at night wondering, this ten inch, this twelve inch, this goes, can we valve it down? You know, without getting a company in, because a valve insertion for a twelve inch right now, we just got a price, because our high-service pump room, that's one of our projects in here, we didn't get to walk through in our tours, it's a rust bucket. Eighteen thousand dollars to put one twelve-inch, uh, hydro valve in, because right now, we can't shut the old high-service pump room off to the system, when they designed it, they didn't put a valve in there. So before we do any maintenance to this, tear any pipes out, we have to spend eighteen thousand dollars just to put a valve in. The rest of the project is going to be about thirty thousand, the whole, all that, that's all deploying, but eighteen thousand just to, just for us to even perform maintenance on it. So, you know, we're, we're kind of stuck on, the day something blows, we're going to have a company in, instead of being eighteen, you're going to pay that service for them to come in on an emergency.
I mean, the general fund, we're have to pay it, or we'll have to take out a loan, which is going to increase your, we can pass that loan debt on to the consumers. So we're just in a unique position right now, um, right now, we staff three full-time people at the water plant, ideologically, it should be four. So the three that we do have, um, they do the best they can, um, but I'm sure some things get, put on hold, and some things prioritize over others.
The truck, the dump trucks of two thousand one, okay, we took, the utility body rusted out, we put a dump body on it. So we're making, we're making an extent, we didn't go buy a whole new truck. Uh, the van was from the surplus up in Columbus, uh, it was an old Ohio State Patrol jailbird van, I guess. You know, it finally rusted out, it's one of the ones going on Gov Deal, so we don't buy all new, you know, for everything, we've been trying to keep the minimum down, but when those guys go out to a water main break, and the truck, which happens, you know, can happen a lot, is break down, then we're, we're stuck with our pumps and stuff, so.
Kelly, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Other than, I didn't mean it, after I just literally just came up. I know we redid these because of loss of revenue, but if revenue was the same, are these increases much different than the first time we brought them to city council?
Not the first one.
No.
So basically, it's the same stuff, just minus the loss of revenue that we've had to equate for from the first time.
And speaking of loss of revenue, with Bell Manor and Debut, they had X of their each bill, with them combined as one. Now, people could correct me if I'm wrong, I think they're still housing about the same people, same employees, they are almost thirty, forty percent less water usage together than what they were separate. So we are seeing efficiency, big time, um, with, with their combined facility.
They're old, there's an aging facility, leaks, not high-efficiency stuff, and.
New toilets, new, new chains.
So someone.
We're talking about loss of revenue, I mean, don't you, I don't know how to apologize for this, just not, not as much.
And it is, oh, our, our flows have been down in high fours before. It wasn't, it was always around six to seven hundred thousand a day, back when I first got hired on at the city in two thousand, when I was working down at the maintenance garage, I'd always hear those numbers, when we had that leak detection four years ago, five years ago, we took that down to, one time, I think, we almost hit four hundred. And this is every day, so we've, we've got our leaks under control now.
So now we put new meters to everybody, who's supposed to be more accurate than what we were before?
And they de- they definitely are, we hit some resident, some, uh, businesses with higher bills. On the flip side of that, the residential properties that always had leaks, paid for them for three months, don't have those leaks anymore, because Kathy, almost on a monthly basis, we get our high usage report, get the leaks, hey, you got a leak, they fix it. Oh, oh, yeah, and so we're, you know, we make money on residential properties leaking, I mean, we do, but that's not the right thing. So now we're actually, for high efficiency, you're kind of getting penalized, because you have the facility in place, you have the infrastructure in place, you have, you have to pay for whether you're efficient or not.
If I remember right, you know, one of the reasons for the meters is that you wanted to see exactly where we were at.
Oh, that, I mean, part of it, yes.
The meters were whole and.
They were over twenty.
And they were leaking, and sometimes it wasn't fresh and crack, and I was talking to Scott, sometimes he would tell me how, you know, it was going around.
Well, we got people that monitor their own meters, they pick up a flyer, and they monitor it, they see weekly, they know what's going on. So, yeah, they know when they're flushing that toilet, they got to leave that little symbol, but they shut it off, so, yes, I mean, on the back end, we picked up some revenue for accuracy, but then we fixed people's leaks, helped them get them caught early enough, and we're losing that.
Kelly, um, I think you mentioned before, to replace that water main around the streets is about a hundred, we'd say, uh, how much a foot?
It, it ranges, it could be fifty to a hundred dollars a foot.
Okay. If these pass, does that ever put us on a trail, possibly in the future to work, repaving and reconstruction of the street in the future? Redo an entire line under one street?
I could probably get a little bit of funds, but when I know I'm doing that, I'm going after some grant funds, OPWC. Here, and I'm glad you brought that up, because it's just.
Because that's something I always worry, I mean, you pay each new roads, and then a month later, you dig them up because they're a whole line of us.
Yeah, and re- and remember this, I can't apply for grants without matching funds, because no grant comes free as far as OPWC. Now, I can get a hundred thousand, get, maybe get two hundred thousand, most water or wastewater projects aren't that cheap, they start at five hundred, a million. So when I go for those, if I know there's no water revenue coming in at that time, I can't apply for a grant, because I don't have the other half to pay for it, like Turk Street. Um, I want to get Turk Street, at least Milton Field, but like you said, it's, it, I've got so many laterals that go bad, and we, we, all those ditches we got going across there, I need to replace those, um, those service lines for our valves, because they're all galvanized. Well, I can get a grant, I can get quite a bit of it covered, but right now, I have no local funds to put with that grant for the project.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bird, you said on, uh, scenario A, you, in your opinion, the best one, but then nothing happens with the water tower in twenty twenty. Is that water tower here, we're waiting three years, or?
Well, we have the recommendation here, um, when I said, I think the exterior is two years, and then the interior is one, two, or is that switched?
Um, I'd have to go back through, I'm sorry.
Um, it's a gamble, you've been taking that gamble in a year, what this report says is how he will give the specifics, but interior is good for a year, it's a new segment, so.
I mean, I'm not going to say the same, but you thought A would be the best scenario or the four? Um, but I'm looking, I'm also looking at C, because that is something that water tower next year.
I don't think the general fund should be paying a dime for this, and I've been adamant about that since day one, it's an enterprise fund, it is that simple, it is supposed to be self-supported. And another reason why I don't think the general fund should be taking a dime out of this, because we have another hundred nine thousand dollar payment we have to pay as well. So the bottom line is this, council has to make our decision, I do not recommend you take a dime out of your general fund to do that. I think it's a water fund, it needs to be, again, self-supported. You can wait three years to do this, absolutely, but you're still going to have the increase.
So if the general fund paid the amount for next year, then down the road, say, in twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, could they pay the general fund back then?
Well, that's when you can look at scenario D. Which that, I don't have a problem with. But you guys got to understand, it is your decision at the end of the day, it is what you seven think is best to go.
The highest percentage rate is. B is. It's B thirty-five. Oh, B, yeah. Would you pass this one?
Yes.
So with C, why don't we put it at the same time, why, why don't they all line up at the same time, right? Just, just outside of, in here, I feel like.
C compared to what?
Fail at our line, because you say, let's do it this year, but when you look through it, uh, the preferable use of it is until twenty twenty. So why don't we push C back to twenty twenty, and we can lock it over the rate now as well?
I think you guys need to make a decision tonight and move forward with whatever one you want to do, to be honest with you. I think the more you put this off, there's going to be more discussion going back and forth. I think you guys are having a hard time with these percentages, because you don't want to, you don't want to raise the rates to your citizens. You guys can't look at it like that, you have to look at the overall health of the water for every one of your citizens.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's what we're doing, Mr. Bird, I just, no. Actually, I thought it was a pretty good question, actually.
So you guys want to hold off for three years, correct?
Well, that's what I was thinking, though, is option A, which you prefer, waits for three years, why not option? Why not option C, wait for three years? You got the money, you don't have to touch an increase. I mean, from looking at it here, in A, you're the one that you just said you wanted.
I didn't say that. I said, that's what Mr. Lindsey said I preferred. We discussed some options on the phone today. And I actually, what I said to Mr. Lindsey was between gifting, I mean, the general fund gifting 115,000 compared to the other one, that's what I prefer between the two. If you really want to know my honest opinion between A, B, C, and D, it's B.
Well, and honestly, nothing, I'm sure I'll catch a lot of it.
That is up to council. I mean, you, this is not an administrative, if you guys want to wait three years.
What question was, I was, between A and C, the two different scottles? Could we, could we?
If that was, if C was one that you wanted to go with, could we push back?
You can, but what's going to happen is you're risking the increase of cost of services. So what you get now for the price might be more expensive two, three years. Yeah, I don't, I, we're just guessing.
That one, 25,000.
Which would be logic to make the other side.
I think, you know, this is going to be expensive, no matter how we do it. And, you know, we got to be responsible of, what we're paying is going to give us the biggest bang for our buck. And all of this is a risk. Thing that worries me about the general fund is, can there be unforeseen things happen to which we're going to shoot ourselves in the foot, taking money out of the general fund?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, but if we go with A or B, are we covered better than if we were to take money away or out of the general fund?
What was your question, I'm sorry?
So if we take money out of the general fund, it's something we're comp, and like, we're out of money.
Then you have no money. Because the water plant can't give money to the general fund.
All right, so if we, if we take, if we do A or B, if something big happens, does unforeseen, are we going to be better suited to deal with that financially?
Yes, because at that point in time, then your general fund will have the funds available to help offset.
Okay.
So you need to pad your general fund more than you pad your water car.
I think we need to protect ourselves in those bad situations.
I think C is, you know, pretty good for the repayment. You know, you take the money out of.
We can pay that, that's great.
That's what the scenario is.
Scenario D. D.
No, I don't particularly care for the high percentage rate in the beginning, but it does go down. Let it go. A and B to me is, I just think it's too hot, personally, this is my own personal opinion. But I think D, you know, it will repay us back as a loan, repay us back. And so that regenerates that, that the general fund.
Thank you, sir.
Me, I just, I would hate to put ourselves in a situation where we have no money all the way here.
Can I be honest with you? We can probably sit here and think of 101 different A, Bs, and Ds in these matches. You know, Mr. Kicker's done a fantastic job of trying to weed out all the different scenarios to present the four that we feel is best to you guys. We can go back and forth, like I said, to figure out, all right, well, what's funding scenario G? What about funding scenarios? There's so many different ways this could be done, to be honest with you. It's almost, quite frankly, you guys have to pick the lesser of the two. Four is in this particular case, so. But you guys want to, you might, at the end of the day, it's your decision. I would be protecting my general fund as much as I can because that's the one that can allocate money to anywhere it needs to go. The moment you deplete that, something happens on a water project, you're taking out a loan now to fix it, and you're going to raise your, increase on your constituents anyway. So there is no best possible solution for this. Again, this is not your guys' fault, it is not our fault. This is where we're at. If you guys want to forego the tower maintenance program altogether and run that risk, that could be a different funding scenario. You know, we can look at some other things, but we're at a critical point to where a decision needs to be made. We brought this to you guys, when was the first time? I'm not using it as a dig, but it's been, it's been a long time since we've revisited this, so.
I don't think it is, where's everybody dancing around trying to avoid the metaphor? I mean, you know, because these are new, these numbers are new as far as product, right?
Yeah, I've never shown these before.
One of them is identical to the one we brought last time. And remember the email where I broke down low usage, medium usage households and high usage? That's all, that was all there. And it give you the dollar amount, because everybody thinks the percentage is so high. I paid that water bill in here, and I think the low usage, which is your, mainly your seniors, 2,000 gallons a month, was, I think, $36 for the whole year, increase, for the whole year, for the 20 or 25% increase. So the whole dollar was, was a lot more manageable to here than here in what a percentage was. The high users, your large families that could use 11,000 to 15,000, we only have a couple of large families that use that. The rest are all commercial businesses. They use more than 10,000 gallons. And I want to say they were in like $100 to $200 more annually is what their bill would go up.
I don't like the idea of using money from your own fund.
I don't either.
I, you know, that thing needs to grow and get, or whatever things that we may end up needing for unexpected costs and just whatever it may be. I also like what you touched on earlier, Mr. Kicker, about depending on, you know, which one is to go with really, and actually to a degree, is that'll enable you to get, you know, go after bigger grants to hopefully start laying, you know, some new plumbing under these, these trips to hopefully install and stuff in the future. So, I know it's not going to be a popular answer either, not because I know a lot of people want to hear that, but, you know, when it comes to water, I don't want to mess with it. It needs to be clean and ready and be there for a week. If you're often, you know, sheriff that it is, and you need to cut one, or you can, in my opinion, you can make that argument going from four deputies to one, or four deputies to three. But when it comes to water, you know, Flint, Michigan went through a mess, and they're probably still going through it. I don't want to go 10 years down the road after, you know, Palm of Council or whatever it may be, and someone coming back and saying, this city's water infrastructure is a mess. You know, we hear about it all the time, that the country's infrastructure is crumbling, and no one's taking care of it. I think it's our responsibility to take care of it, get it done. So that's where I stand. It's not popular, but I don't, I mean, I don't have to pay that increase. My wife, my kids are going to be paying that, maybe one of my family. I know it's not popular, but that's what I want. I know no one else is going to say that, but I'm just being honest. Mr.?
On D, but why a three-year repayment? Is there something that we've got, that's something we have to live with or?
Well, I mean, you got to look at your ending balance, so we can't really do much over 30 to five?
No, I'm talking less.
I'm trying to re, get the general fund back to where it needs to go in the shortest amount of time possible.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Yeah, we can split that over four or five.
I was just looking at if you stretch that over five to match the payments back of the 115. Basically, you increase your reserves a little bit, not a giant amount, but 15,000, 15,4 a year if you put over five to three, but I don't know if there was a reason for that.
Yeah, the auditors have some set guidelines. I reviewed those prior to repayment. And it is not ASAP, but it is quickly and as feasible as possible with certain stipulations. And it's not very easy. It is a very tedious thing to do this loan repayment, there's a lot of stipulations you need to follow.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions before we, as far as, I'm sorry, because I'm assuming we're going to have to go down the line and get some, you know, some direction here, because we're going to have to vote on this.
I mean, like Randy said, there's always losses. I mean, I could go through A to Z, but, you know, looking at other municipalities, rate structures. I went to, I've been to many R-CAP classes where they teach you how to do rate structures. Industrial users, they want you, your industrial users to pay more. I don't think us, as at New Carlisle and the business we got, that you want to make bad metals pay more because they put a heavier usage on your utility. So, yes, in New Carlisle, everybody pays their share per thousand gallons. So it seemed to be the simplest, without punishing a specific group, industrial rate. I mean, there's numerous ways they do it. There's hundreds of ways that different towns do it. And this seemed to be the simplest, kind of the best way to get where we needed to go.
We just need a work.
Or aquifers.
Or aquifers. Well, like you said earlier, nine years, which in nine years is a waste, a waste. And that payment comes out, stops, freezes, there's multiple options.
Sure. I, like, we just, I, we just need to get it to a place where we can move it in a good direction where it's a financially healthy enterprise zone.
Because the general fund is looking a whole lot better than what we have.
It is, that's why I'm nervous taking the money out of it.
And I like, I like the trend, though.
Sure.
So, go down the line and go with the same thing, and just drive, anything you need to say, or?
Again, it, in a perfect world, it'd be great if we could pay for this, pay for this in the general fund. But I, I do think it'd just be irresponsible. I mean, the, it's not worth the risk when it comes to water. I would rather do this and actually do it right. And that way, we don't have to worry about it. We're paying for it in the general fund, we get ourselves in a situation, we got to take out another loan, so then not only are we paying for it twice, it's maybe more money. I wish we weren't in this situation.
And another thing with the general fund too is, thank you, it's always been in the back of my head, we have a police levy coming back up. If that thing fails, your general fund now is paid $419,000 a year for police services. So that's another component to ask as to why it's not the best idea to maybe use general fund funds until we figure out, when's the police levy up? 2019, 2020? Three more years?
Thank you, Sean. Sean, do you have any?
What was your?
I didn't, oh, for once, for a second.
So what was your choice?
I was, I'm going back and forth between A and B. I wish, if we could be here all night, I was talking about D, pay it back. I guess right now, I'm going with A.
What was your one?
Another general fund is getting healthy. I think I would go with C at this point, to have a general fund, pay that for a payment. And then at some point, if we can pay it back three years, then pay it back. So I guess it would really be D. Because that is the only, the only one I believe would pay it back. I got 40% of it, too. I know I did need the trouble increases, because I thought originally we would be discussing this. A few months ago, I thought we was looking at 35, 35, and, you know, these are a little smoothly higher.
Well, also, it's been quite a few months, and we've had to account for the loss of revenue, which is why you see that little bit of difference.
We have a better view, I think, of what is the usage is now, too. But I think I would go with C, even though it has a popular decision. But I think the general fund could enable almost high payment of 115, and not put it in such a bind to make it catastrophic or something over that.
It's not good.
Anything that could make us catastrophic. I mean, we could have a sewer pipe blow up, or a water pole pipe blow up, or both towers fall or something. That's all that would be beyond any of our control. But I would still, I think I would go for C.
Mr. Bird, this isn't like a vote right now. We're looking at life as much as.
Thank you for the review.
I got to beat this horse to death. Definitely C. I mean, I would like to see C spread out three years like A, but we'll get that.
Well, let's see, let me see.
Not to have opinions, because everyone knows what I'm saying.
I said what I thought about B, and, you know, with Aaron saying it again, I could live with A, actually.
I've been to a lot of places, but water is terrible. You know, so, you know, water is very important. Water is life, you know, it really is. And so, I do agree that our tower, unfortunately, you know, does need work. And wish I knew about a year ago. But anyway, I like D because of the payback. Yeah, I agree with what you're saying.
Did you say B or D?
D. And, because of D, because of the payback. That's why I like it. You know, it's an enterprise fund, you know, it's like any other business. If you take a loan, you pay it back.
Mr. Wolf?
I hate them all.
Well, thank you for the compliment on hard work. I hate your work.
I did not say that.
I know, just to say the work. These are stressful times.
I, I'm concerned because we're just talking that they, we have need of fire level. And then we're going to increase water rates. I'm on a fixed income. But I don't like, I don't like A. We either got a problem or we don't. We either got a problem or we don't, and why are we going to put it off three years? That's why I don't like A.
Any possibility that price could go up?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, we're looking, we've projected it to be higher than any other option. I, my gut instinct is, is, I hate the rates on D. My gut instinct is C. Using general fund money, I would like to see, I like the concept of paying it back. So it's a combination of C and B. And I don't know.
C and B or C and D?
I'm sorry, that's C and D, C and D. Or C and D with the payback, you know?
And we can amend the payback terms.
I, but I don't like the 40% rates at the top, you know, the full 40%. I don't, it just sounds a little more 2015. It sounds a little more palatable to me to go 2015, 22. You're talking 1%, all right? 2015, 22, the repayment that you've got on C. Turning that into a payback of a five-year term on the general fund on the bottom line. So a combination of that is what I kind of like.
On D, spread that out over five years?
Spread that over five, it makes, it makes your payments about 17, five or something, I just did in my head.
And keep it with the rates of C, is that what you're saying?
Keep with the rates of C.
Spread it out. Say that again, all the time.
Yeah, now we're changing. Take, take the rates of C. Now, the problem is, we don't have the bottom line numbers of what the full effects that that's going to do. But you borrow the money from the general fund as we do in C.
Borrow, not?
We borrow. All right, I'm sorry, so we do in D. We borrow as we do in D. Pay it back over five years, finishing it out in 2023.
And the percentage rate, so?
And that adds $15,000 to your bottom line carryover on each one of those years, okay?
So you're saying D?
No. But use the, use the payment, the rates of C, 2015, 22.
Well, we also run the risk of spreading those out, and that's going to put us past that ego.
Of course, I don't know if we're allowed to do that.
Well, three years is the auditor recommendation, which they really don't recommend you using, they don't put money at all, but they don't allow you to do that.
Right.
But, and I understand what you're saying with that, spread it over five years. Do you think it's just honest discussion?
Yeah.
Keep it the way it is, because the closer we get to paying it off and the general fund is good to go, the general fund's good to go. Because the general fund's going to need money, because when's the police levy up again? So the moment that that doesn't pass, we now have to have a lot more money out of the general fund.
But would that fail be astronomically high? Because renewed levies, very rarely fail.
Well.
Very, almost, almost 86% in actions, like 85.3.
I don't rest on that until we have the tally votes.
Especially after one rate raise, I mean, you may be exactly.
I'm comfortable with, wow. Now, what you're saying, you're saying a hybrid, you like D, just don't like the repayment terms, is that what I'm getting at?
I like, I like repaying.
Okay. Is there, are you okay with keeping D how it is then?
No, I don't like the 40, the 25, 10, 5.
That's a 39, that's a 35, 40% increase.
If you go 2015, 22, it's 39. It's only 1%, but it's not a 25% right off the bat.
But is that 1%? Are you risking that 1% for that one year out of the general fund?
Yes, I am.
And you're okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Unless you're guys is a C?
Absolutely. I, I just, I think it's more palatable for the raise, for the increase in the raise. Just the psychological sounding of 2015, 22.
You're gonna raise it 1%, they're not gonna be happy.
I know, no, they're not gonna be happy.
You're with D with C rates.
It's D, D with C rates.
See, I didn't know we could mix and match. I don't like any of them.
Shouldn't they get paid back after four years?
No, they should be paid back three, if you keep with that new fund.
D with C rates.
Problem is, I don't know. Well, we're loading, we're loading the front end with the funds, uh, borrowed.
I mean, I can go both ways, Mr. Lafferty, just again, for honest discussion.
Sure.
You have a 20% increase the first year on C, and you have a 25% increase on D, or over that second year, you have a 10% increase opposed, and then you have a 15% increase on C, right? Was I looking at the right one, D and C?
Yeah.
And then you have a two and two.
Right.
You're saying the two years is higher, the first year is higher on one, but the overall two years?
Yeah, I, I mean.
The same.
I mean, on the second.
Overall, two years you've gained.
You're really just disbanding the 5%, that's all you're doing.
Exactly, exactly. But it sounds better.
Yeah, the sound, the big thing is when you had that lower percentage, 20 than, than 10, or 20 to 15, or 25, and the other way around, there was a big difference of compounding that money. I didn't realize how much of a change it made when you compound the first rate.
Okay.
Add on the second rate, add on the third, remember?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the compound made a huge difference in that bottom line dollar.
Yeah.
As soon as I would switch 2% or 5% and switch it around, that's why I said I had to front load, I had no, I mean, nobody's gonna give me all this money from, I mean, there's no federal bailout program coming to me, so, um.
And another thing with D and C is D only has three years of increase as well, C has four.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's, it's a tough, tough decision.
It is, it is.
Could we do that?
I, and I, I mean, I look at it as, at that point, as a perpetual 2%.
You're not gonna need a perpetual 2% under 2026.
No, you shouldn't, but you shouldn't.
Sure, I got you. Well, I mean, it's always nice to have the money there.
Because it's a reserve.
Okay, so, I'll be honest with you, I don't have legislation for the hybrid ones, but I'm sure we can figure something out on the fly here.
I have a question.
Well, we still haven't done it, I mean.
You got Rick, yeah.
Rick had something.
I have probably the dumbest question that you have ever been asked in your life, but I'm gonna ask, and I'm not ashamed to ask the question. We have two water towers. Do you absolutely need a water tower?
Well, yes, you do.
Okay, and the reason I'm asking that is, there's not a pump big enough, is what you're saying, or pumps big enough that they won't run on demand and supply water anytime you need it to city.
Yeah.
Because I did some reading by NASA.
Yeah, you, uh, systems that run pressure relief.
Exactly.
Are an issue, big time issue.
They are, okay.
Yeah, when you run a tower, I mean, you get, uh, the life expectancy of the tower when you maintain it.
Right.
It's all gravity. See, when, when you pump, when, when our pumps turn on, our pressure skyrockets and goes back off, our water tower takes that brunt of that for the most part, instead of the residential plumbing systems. That's where you typically have higher pressures and they'll, they'll blow systems out.
Okay, because I did read a little about, a little bit about it.
They're there, they're there.
There are a few cities out there who do it, and I was just wondering.
When our tower goes out of service to be in use, they will put pressure reliefs on.
Okay, to, to relieve the pressure from?
Yeah, because Adams Tower is only 100,000 gallons, and it's gonna be hard for it to feed the city by itself.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, you know, if you can do hybrids, uh, that's the best thing I've heard tonight. I don't like any of them, you did a horrible job, I don't like any of them. You know, no, I'm just kidding.
It was rough through.
I wouldn't have, no, I'm teasing you, Randy, I wouldn't have your job, but.
No.
I was going back and forth, I didn't even think about what he was saying, and I agree with him 100%. And if somebody wants to say I couldn't think for myself, that's fine, I did not think of that, but, uh, I do like it.
So, okay. That's, that's the whole point of these work sessions, to come together and say, this is what we think, this is what you guys think today's the day. You guys have the final say, so however you seven want to move forward, that's our job to say, okay.
Unless you have a magic ball.
Can I be honest with you?
Yeah.
I think this is a very good work session, you know, to come and, you know, this is our stance on it, this is your stance on it, and you come to this hybrid thing, fantastic.
I like, I like it too, I wanted to say I like it too, because I'm glad that we get to hear everybody.
So, keep the rates.
Yeah. I need to provide a copy of it.
C rates on D.
C rates on D.
Same with D, increase number 25, 10.
Yeah, still.
25, 22, 22.
Are you okay with that, everyone? Hold on, I don't want to jump to conclusions here, Mr. Mayor, through meaning, I'm just trying, I'm in my head, I'm trying to figure out how I'm gonna word this legislation.
I don't need to, because what's my introduction?
Introduction.
Introduction. Man, I tell you what I'm hearing over and over again, we have a water plant that's 45% at 45% capacity, tells you how important it is to focus on growth, more revenue, more business, use that water plant.
So, capital, anybody else have any questions? Mr. Ridge.
Can I ask one question real quick, if you don't mind? The two council members elect, what's your opinions on this?
Yeah, not a good idea.
I want to hear this one, it's true.
Combination of both, Mr. Cook?
I go along.
C and D?
I'm saving it for D.
Okay. Wait a minute, don't we have to, we have the next question, we didn't go to eat, we gotta, we've got.
Hi, Mr. Bruce.
Facebook, don't blow me up.
Because I'm not gonna have a full council. Who's gonna be here? I think Mr., everyone's gonna be here.
Except for next time.
Okay.
I plan on being here, huh?
So, should we?
Everybody be in the next.
Let me ask you this, well, except Mr. Lindsey. If I, because I'm gonna have to reword this draft, I don't have a hybrid scenario with this ordinance, so if I go back and redraft it, and I introduce the hybrid DC as an emergency ordinance, will that be okay? Because it will need to be passed on the 18th.
Yes, for me.
Yes.
I can't, I don't know if that's legal for you to ask that, but.
Well, it's legal, yeah, it's legal.
Is everyone on council is gonna be here on the 18th, okay with me introducing the hybrid DC scenario as emergency ordinance?
Sure.
I am.
I am. And I say that because Mr. Lindsey is not, because Mr. Lindsey is not gonna be here.
Then you have an emergency. Then you call emergency.
Yeah.
Well, no, no, there's rules. Okay, so, let me ask you this.
Introduce it immediately, and then if we can vote on that today, because God fits something, somebody.
Can, can I just have, I would rather spend five, 10 minutes now to reword this than to have a special meeting for, I'm saying, I'm saying that.
I'd rather have all of us vote on it.
Yes.
Is this gonna be an emergency tonight?
It's gonna be.
Why couldn't it be? Why couldn't it be? Why couldn't it be an introduction and an emergency?
I'm sorry?
Why couldn't it be an introduction and an emergency tonight? We're all here.
Um, can I be honest with you? I don't have a printing, something here to print out the ord, I mean, does that matter?
No, you can sign it.
Pass that around, we're all reading.
Yeah, I think we're on shaky ground. Yeah, I think we're on shaky ground.
Very shaky ground.
We have a police officer right there, does she think we're okay or not? You gonna arrest us if we do it?
No, 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 we can't do that, because even as emergency ordinance, we still have to get notification to the newspaper, so that's just, it's fishy.
Okay.
It has to be an emergency.
Mr. Bridge, how many, how much time?
No, it doesn't need to be an emergency ordinance, we can introduce it tonight.
Yeah. Mr. Bridge?
Yeah.
You know, it sounds good, we really know.
All right, let me think about this, so we're doing D with C rates, right?
Yes.
Okay, so. D, I got 1753 up there.
Yeah, that's the same. Randy, can we just have a little, like, father?
Let's take a break while he's working on this.
Okay, take a break. Time to wake up, Captain.
All right, please pay attention to this, because it's all just wrote on the fly, some of it. Okay, wait, 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 wait.
You get too ahead of yourself.
Well, are we gonna introduce this?
Yeah.
We need to suspend the rules of council to add ordinance 1753 to.
Mr. Lafferty?
I'm gonna suspend the rules of council to add the ordinance 17 dash 53.
I have a second by Mr. Rick.
Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Reynolds. Okay.
On Mr. Smith.
Who's Mr. Smith?
That's just, he just.
He went to worship.
Mr. Lindsey. Mr. Lindsey's on suspending the rules.
Yes.
Mr. Leidy.
Yes.
Mr. Rick Lowery.
Yes.
Mr. Lafferty.
Yes.
Mr. Craywalker.
Yes.
Mayor Lowery.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Can I go now?
Yes, yes, you may.
Okay. Ordinance 1753, an ordinance amending section 1043.05 of the codified ordinance of the City of New Carlisle regarding charges for the use of the municipal water supply, whereas council has determined that is, that is, it is necessary for adjustments to be made in the rate structure for water service provided by the City of New Carlisle. And, whereas, the City of New Carlisle is in need of raising water rates to account for the increased cost of operations and to participate in the tower maintenance program. And, whereas, if city council should pass this ordinance, the general fund will loan the water department $115,500 in 2018, which is the equivalent cost of the first year of the tower maintenance program. And, whereas, the water fund will repay the general fund the $115,500 over the course of three years, with a payment of $38,500 in 2019, $38,500 in 2020, and $38,500 in 2021. Now, therefore, the municipality of the city, the municipality of New Carlisle hereby ordains that section 1043.05 of the codified ordinance of the City of New Carlisle be amended by deleting it entirely and substituting with the following. 1043.05, excuse me, charges for, charges for use of municipal water supply. One, there is hereby established a charge for 1,000 gallons of water used from the municipal water supply as follows. A, commencing with usage beginning January 1, 2018, and continuing through December 31, 2018, usage, a charge of $8.74. B, commencing with usage beginning January 1, 2019, and continuing through December 31, 2019, usage, a charge of $10.05. C, commencing with usage beginning January 1, 2020, and continuing through December 31, 2020, usage, a charge of $10.25. And D, commencing with the usage beginning January 1, 2020, and continuing through December 31, 2020, usage, a charge of $10.46. Passed this day of 17 blah, and all this signature stuff.
It'll be 2021.
Yes, you're right. Uh, D is gonna be 2021, I read it wrong, because I just copied and pasted from the last one. So, let me reread section D, and I do apologize. D, commencing with usage beginning January 1, 2021, and continuing through December 31, 2021, usage, a charge of $10.46.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, motion to adopt ordinance.
No, 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 just read it tonight.
Okay, that's right, it's not emergency.
Okay. You need anything else to us? Thank you. Mr. Mayor, would you put a copy in my box?
That's it, that's it.
Yeah.
Got me there, huh?